All right, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, damn.
What's that about?
A little loud. It's the first time. Call the meeting to order. First order of business, legibly, just please. One allegiance to the law.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under one individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of November 25th. So moved. We have a movement to approve the minutes. There's a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes for the 25th of November. Harry's. Next is to approve the roll of accounts dated November 28th, 2024, and the amount of $116,775.41, and dated December 12th, 2024, and the amount of $384,283.9. So moved. There's a motion? Second? There is a second? All in favor? Right along. Scary. The report of committees. I had no committee work this week, this month.
Yeah, Mr. Job, I'll keep that, but I'll report out in January.
Okay. Okay. Administrator reports. We have our volunteer to go first. Lovely.
Just a few quick updates. So we had our drama performance at the beginning of this month. And the two that were open to the public workhouse, I heard the second one on Saturday was almost dining room only. Last Thursday, we had the chorus concert here for our fifth and sixth graders. And we did a good turnout for that as well. Tomorrow is our fifth and sixth grade band concert at 6:30. Thursday, we have a high school band coming to WBS to perform for our students, so that will be great. Our sixth grade chorus Wednesday will be caroling around our building. And just a little information on our late start. Last Thursday, we worked on planning for students with dysregulative behavior. There were lots of great conversations, collaboration, and planning that went on during that time, so.
Do you have current enrollment numbers?
I believe we're at 585, but I don't have the sheet rating for me. 585 was the last.
That's up from the beginning of the year, right?
Um, it's slightly up, but it's really been around by 80, 80. I think at one point, we're closer to 590, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'll start with the late start on December 12th. Staff works on curriculum and Atlas entry. I'd like to thank the board for allowing the late starts. It's going extremely well for our teachers. We had a music field trip today. Twenty-five band students and an additional five GT art students attended Goodroe's Retirement Home. The band performed several pieces of music while the GT art students completed holiday greeting cards. On Friday, we have a remarkable raider assembly to recognize students for respectful, responsible behavior. The student leadership team I've referenced, we approximately, let's say between 20 and 30 students participating or using new equipment purchased with the tech grant. Students will be working in conjunction with the Black Raider News source to deliver information to the community. The Forensic Science Club will be the first extracurricular group showcased by this team. And finally, I talked about the career CAF at the last meeting. On January 14th, we're hosting the first of what we hope will be many career cafes for select eighth graders. We have conducted the survey to generate, to see what their interest levels are. This is a new program. It was created by our school counselor, Kate Hersom, and is designed to expose eighth grade students to careers and vocations from a wide range of categories. So we hope to do this every four to six weeks. So the first one is up and coming after the holiday break. So we're very excited about that. And we're on the agenda later for drama. That's all I have.
Any, you said you did the survey for the career cafe?
We did, yes.
Anything stand out?
It was all over the place, as you might suspect. So Kate did a nice job with the assistance of Michelle. The three of us collaborated to try to reduce it because we didn't want that wide variety. Because they'll go every which way. So our focus this, this time is the arts, performing arts. So if you know any band members or performing arts, you probably remember the name Sam Delory. Sam was oversaw from clinical, our social workers a couple of years back. She now works at Waterville. She does a lot with the Waterville Opera House as her secondary. So she's going to come and be one of our guest panels. So if you have anybody in mind, please contact myself, Michelle, or Kate Hersom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last month, I talked to your, a few, few weeks ago, really, I talked to you about Admittin' Day, and I have some final stats that I'd like to share with you about that. As I mentioned, 60 of the 85 seniors participated. So that's about 70% of the class. There were 135 total appointments that day with the, and the schools that participated were KBCC, Thomas, UMA, UMF, Hassan, UMaine, and USM. So they were all here doing on the same decisions for our students. Five of those seven participating colleges let students know on that day their merit scholarships. So the students would know for each of those schools, if they got in, how much merit money they would get. In total, our seniors on that day were awarded $1.6 million in merit money. Again, that number is really big. And it's inflated a little bit if you think if I got into four of those five schools and I got merit money at four schools, that money doesn't carry over to all of them. But if I choose one of those schools, I get that money. I did make a joke to Mr. Preble that the principal gets whatever's left over, but that is not true. Again, there were 125 acceptances to colleges on that day. And that's just a huge number, which is such a great day for our kids. Like Jason mentioned, I also want to highlight the work that we did at the Late Start last week because I think it's important for you to hear when you made that decision to, to make that change, how it is impacting teachers in a good way. We were able to focus on the Dangerous Student Behavior Law that came out last year. The really cool thing is, is that the union, the MPA, the School Board Association, the Special Ed Directors Association, and the Superintendents Association have all worked together on guidance with that law to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page. Which is really cool because when was the last time you heard all of those organizations working together to, to support kids and administrators and teachers all together? So that's really good. So we spent some time going over that, making sure everybody understood the process and all of that. Then we continued our work with the regulated classroom. As you remember, we're focusing activities this year with regulated classroom like Peter did with you earlier this year to focus on the wellbeing of the adults. Because if we can focus on the adults, then the adults are going to be in a better shape to work with kids. One thing I do every time we do an activity is I relate it back to the classroom and how teachers can utilize that. So we did a little team building activity, a scavenger hunt. But on top of the scavenger hunt, there were pieces involved in there that were about the regulated classroom. One of the things to get into their different groups, we did an activity where we just mixed everybody up. So that way, it's not the English department versus the science department. People that they meet with all the time. It was mixed around the whole building. And all I did was I took four people that maybe have something in common, like Ringo, Paul, George, John, right? Which are the Beatles, right? So I just had names to sprinkle around. Some were from sitcoms like Friends, some were from movies, some were, I had Ultimate Warrior, Roddy Roddy Piper, and Hulk Hogan. So I was really coming up with a lot of unique things that people knew, that some people didn't know. Because it got them talking about, well, who is Roddy Piper? Who is this person, right? And somebody goes, oh, he's a famous wrestler. Okay, so, and then this group, yeah, well, you would be with the Al Gore, and it got people talking. And what I related that back to is, think about group work that you do in your classroom. Sometimes kids may not be comfortable with the partner that they're given with. However, if you give them something to talk about, it gives them something to talk about that isn't about math or social study. And it can be done in five minutes. So it's five minutes of time that you're spending to make people feel connected in the group that they're working with. And so that way, they could see the connection. Yes, we were having fun and letting out some steam, but I related it back to what they could do in their class with their, with their students. Quick, fun, get to know you, icebreakers can make for better work that the kids could work on later on. And again, it made it more meaningful. And the last thing I really want to talk about is this time of year is so, brings a lot of joy for a lot of people. But it also brings a lot of stress to me. And, you know, the students at Winslow High School are no different. I think our staff do a really good job of making sure that we get the word out that if there's kids who need gifts this time of year, we support those kids and those families. But it brings stress. And, you know, when we're seeing that stress boil over into the school and we're working with kids and families on an individual level just to get them through the day sometimes. And, you know, we've got an amazing school and an amazing support and amazing kids and amazing families, but they all need a little support sometimes a year. Thanksgiving to midterms is a time that is really difficult for a lot of kids. We show up every day, or people just try to, and it's important. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment chat. When you just gave us some statistics on Admittin' Day, when you talked about how do you, how are our students succeeding? I mean, there is a snapshot, one snapshot on how our students are succeeding. And we've mentioned this before. But for you to have 60 out of 85 seniors do the Admittin' Day with 185 appointments and 125 acceptances, that tells me that you're preparing your kids for the, for the future. So that's, that's really, really great to hear with $1.6 million of merit scholarships for our kids. That's amazing. The other piece that you just mentioned, you're right. Stress at this time of year is incredible, and you're dealing with a lot of different issues. But I commend you and the other building administrators for working on the regulated classroom and those activities, which we received as a result of a grant. And we'll work in that program and with our staff and with our kids. So hats off to you and the other administrators who are doing this work.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to update you on our Teach with Technology grant. We have just about spent out the grant. It's about 24, just over $24,000 that we've spent. And to remind you, the types of things that we've received in district now, we actually have them here now. So that's the big update. Sphero computer science accessories that go along with the robot products and equipment we got from a grant last year. 3D printers and due to Black Friday sales, actually, this worked out in our favor that they were so delayed in giving us the grant go-ahead, we were able to take advantage of some sales. And so we ordered six 3D printers, right, six? To go across the district. So each school got two. And we had planned for one. So that, that was an advantage for us. And with that, we have all the accessories and filament and so forth. We received microscopes with digital cameras. That are exciting. We got motion detectors, document cameras, graphic calculators, several Rebel, Canon Rebel cameras for both the art and science departments, a photo printer as such. So those items have arrived. I think we've ordered everything we intended to. We have about $1,200 or so remaining. And so we'll probably look for some, a couple of additional things for the 3D printers and some more filament because we're going to, we anticipate going through that rather quickly. So that's the big update. Those, those items have finally arrived, so we're excited about that. Before we can submit to be reimbursed for those items, however, it's part of our contract that we do a couple of things. And so here are the two things we have coming up. The first is, we're going to present to the school board. That was one of our options, and, and I knew right away that one we would want to do. So I'm thinking perhaps in February, we will have a demonstration of 3D printer being used. We'll put it up, put it together in here. And if you have never seen one build something, it's pretty cool. And so we'd like to show you that. So we'll probably bring the 3D printer. And the Black Raider News group is working with their brand-new audiovisual equipment that they received with the grant, which is another thing. We've gotten all the computers and all their cameras and all the things to do what Jason had mentioned earlier. They're going to interview the forensic science, the Forensics Club science teacher and do a video presentation for you using the new equipment. So that will be exciting. So we're hoping that will be the school board presentation. And then another option, we have a long list of things. I chose host the learning group. I already had this somewhat planned, and so this is going to work out nicely for us in terms of the grant. At our next workshop day on January 27th, we'll be hosting two sessions, two hours in the morning, two in the afternoon. The two hours in the morning will be about the 3D printers. So I've already asked Andrew Dorian, who's a teacher here at the junior high, who has been an early adopter of the 3D printers. He's very excited. He's all in, and he's got them put together, and he's learning fast and furious and using them. So we're going to have teachers, select teachers, meet with him for a couple of hours and set up their printers and explore and play with the printers. And then in the afternoon, we're going to host a session over the elementary school for the robotics stuff. We have the Sphero robotics equipment, and we have the Lego robotics supplies. So we want to introduce the teachers, select teachers, to that as well. So that will be our learning experience, the learning group. I intend to target our computer teachers first and the STEM teacher, the gifted and talented teachers, the media director of the media center, and invite the tech team to attend as well, to get that small group started. And we'll see where it leads us from there. But those will be the two things that will fulfill our grant obligation. And then I will submit all of the evidence of that and we can reimburse that money for the grant. So that's kind of exciting. The, the items have arrived in there. They're starting to be used, and it's exciting to see what the kids will end up doing with them. That's my update.
I have a question, actually. Do you anticipate doing any kind of, I don't want to say pre-work, but coordination with MMTC? So that way, you know, students that are here using some of the stuff, the AV stuff, you know, if that's something that they really, really like in ninth, 10th grade, it can kind of prompt them on that career track or that path when they have the opportunity to choose, you know, where they want to go to over at MMTC?
Yeah, I can anticipate that that will be something down the road for us. I think we're at a very kind of beginning phase. And my goal is to, let's educate some adults first to get them comfortable with using it. They're tricky to use, and then how do you infuse it into your classroom? I think we have a lot of learning to do, to do that. But I absolutely see that intersection there between, you know, and Chad has suggested from high school, and this was just a suggestion, we have to move forward with it, but the idea of putting the 3D printers in here so that kids would have open access to them. Or they, if something were printing, they could come in and just see it happening. This would be a nice central location, perhaps. And we haven't gone anywhere with that idea. We were just brainstorming, how are we going to start integrating these and getting kids to see them and have access, and the adults as well? For them to see them, feel comfortable with them, and start maybe asking questions of their own. We have one science teacher who attended a class. She got the printer, and she uses it regularly to print bones and different things that she uses for demonstration. She's become quite comfortable with that. That's what we need. So I'm looking for those, those opportunities first. But I think what you're talking about is an excellent thing for us to keep in mind.
Very cool.
Well, if I can add, I think just having Black Raider News started that conversation. One of the first kids that helped get Black Raider News up and running. And it was a passion of his. It was a passion of Mr. Versani. But he's now an anchor on one of the local Bangor TV stations, 6 o'clock news. And it started here. It was fostered here. I think this equipment's going to help foster that even more.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you, Michelle, for your work on all this.
Of course. Thank you.
A very quick update. The first is that I'm hoping to be fully staffed by the end of the week. Just interviewed an NTEC 3 and an NTEC 1, and hopefully everything works out. That is true. We will be fully staffed in the special education department. And then my second update is around aligning special education curriculum with the district curriculum, which is iReady. I've been working with Michelle to dive into the achievement data of our special education students. And then we've met with our interventionists to look at both reading and math and aligning our IEP goals of individual students with the goals from iReady, math, and reading as well. And so we're hoping to meet again in mid-January for a check-in. Our intervention, interventionists are going to be providing some coaching for the special education teachers with the goal that least restrictive environment if the students in the special education classrooms are also participating in the same curriculum as all of the other students, that they'll be able to, you know, it won't be a life sentence. They'll be able to receive their instruction in the general education classrooms.
Thank you, Chris.
We're ready for winter this year, unless we have a major breakdown of the equipment. But we should be ready to handle the park lots for the morning commute for the students to get to school and then the afternoon for the students to leave the schools. But since the last meeting, we've been working on trying to balance the building temperatures just so we can provide a more comfortable and learning environment for the students. We've been trying to, with the, the dramatic swing in temperatures that we've been experiencing, so we've been trying to balance things out so it keeps it more consistent inside building temperature for students. So that's been, we've been finding some things and adjusting, addressing. And it's a still continuing thing that we're trying to do.
Oh, that's, that's really all. How much does a day like a 50-degree day screw with the temperatures inside the classrooms?
It, it throws the whole heating system for a tailspin because our boilers, we enable and disable boilers at a lower temperature. So we stop producing heat to try to save energy. But then a lot of that depends on the, if it's sunny out, if it's sunny, the side of the building that gets most of the sunlight will start overheating. So we're trying to balance free cooling, bringing in outside air to try to lower those building temperatures. But on the other side, where we're not getting the sun, trying to maintain heat with the, with the dramatic temperatures we've been having. We have 50-degree days and then 20-degree days, trying to find the even balance, trying to run our systems appropriately with outdoor air. So we're trying to manage a lot of things based off outside air temperatures. So we're trying to implement different programs that allow certain things based off outside air so we can keep a more comfortable building temperature.
I really don't have much to add today because physically, we just here a couple of weeks ago when we were. But all the athletics have started. They're underway, a couple of weeks in. Over the vacation break, athletics doesn't take a vacation. We have stuff going on pretty much every day except for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. We'll kind of go from there, but everything's great.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody. Okay. Thank you all. Finance Assistance Group report.
I made 45.2% of the year as passed and 45.86% of the budget as it stands. So not much to say there. If you have some sort of questions.
Scott, just for your knowledge, and I appreciate your being here tonight and listening in, but what Amanda just said, I'm not sure if you caught that because she has a very soft voice. But she reported that currently 45.20% of the year has gone by, and we have spent 45.86% of our budget. So when you look at it from that perspective, we run very tight budgets in terms of where we are on the year, what we spend.
Okay. No questions, so your, your turn.
My turn. First thing I'd like to just mention to all of you is that Norman Lawrence, known as Ziggy, one of our custodians, has approached Cory and myself to ask if he could use one of the buildings to put on a Central Maine Family Christmas. And the idea behind this is that Norman is a former vet. And when Christmas comes around, he's very in tune with people not being alone, whether it be vets who are alone or, or members who live in a community or live in a near community, to make sure that they spend Christmas with someone. So he's, he's done this now for a few years. This is the second year that he was, he's asked to use the elementary school. So on December 25th, from 11 to 2, he has more than 200 volunteers working at this event to serve a traditional Christmas turkey dinner to 600 or more people at Winslow Elementary School. And all of this is donations that he gets from various vendors to make this happen. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful piece of work that he does for, for people who may otherwise be alone on Christmas Day. I want to bring that to your attention. The other piece that we have is, again, Charlie and Cory were in the old junior high removing some last few items that need to come out of there because we're no longer using that building, obviously. They found in the 1972 section what is called a time capsule. We don't have any instructions on this time capsule as to when it's supposed to be opened. Most time capsules are 100 years. We're going to do a little research into it to see what we can find out. But for now, we've taken it and put it in our safe at Central Office. And there it will sit with a note on it saying where it was found, when it was found. And, you know, it was, that section of the building was 1972, so we're assuming it belongs to that section. So just a little, little trivia there, a little fun news to share with you. The other thing that I have for you this evening is a budget timeline.
I think it's for the regular news.
Yeah. We have 52 years, we are going to get close to you. So this, this is a budget timeline that we're looking at. We've been asked by the town council if we could present to them on a budget workshop with the town council on March 13th. That is a fairly aggressive timeline for us. When you look at, when you look at January 27th, that's our next regular meeting after tonight's. Last year, we had started January 22nd, so that eliminates a week. And if you look at the budget workshop with the town council, we're being asked to be ready to present that workshop. On the 13th, last year, we did that on April 9th. So we have one week less at the beginning and shorter time at the end. Also, if you look at it, this year, on April 14th, there's the first read, first vote on the FY '26 budget from the town council. Last year, that date was April 22nd. So everything has been moved up. So our administrators are already working hard to gather their, their numbers. They're meeting with their department chairs and getting information from them. They'll be working, obviously, through the holidays to gather. And typically what happens, Scott, to so you know how this process works, it really starts in the summer. Because you look at all of the information, the data that you have, how your students did during the year. You meet as an administrative team during the summer along with the team leaders and teachers, and you start talking about what are the things that you need. and you start talking about what are the things that you need and how does that play out in your budget. You heard tonight professional development, you heard different things. So this timeline right here, what will happen is on January 27th, the different budget sections will present. We'll have the budget development process on the 27th, we'll start with transportation. Winslow High School will present that night, Winslow High School Athletics will present that night, Winslow High School Maintenance will be presented that night. And how that works is that everybody who works on putting this budget together looks at their lines, they look at three-year averages of their lines to see how things have worked when they make predictions about what they'll need. And there's a lot of other factors which we'll get into on that night, but that's a start. February 10th is, will be a special meeting in order to get those other cost entries in. February 24th is a regular meeting. March 10th will be a special meeting if we need it. And then the March 13th will be the budget workshop with the town council. Now, a concern that I have with this aggressive timeline is that we often don't hear what our 279 is going to be, our revenues from the state until January, a little bit later, February sometimes. We absolutely will not know our insurance numbers. Insurance numbers are huge because if the MEA can buy down some of those percentages, we always budget at 10% because we never know what it is. 1% for us can be $26,000. So if we come in at, you know, 2% less than what we budgeted, it, it could be a significant savings right there, but we won't know those numbers till April. So when we go for that workshop, we won't have those numbers. So the number that we'll have in there will be one of the, be a higher number, of course. This is really to share with you, so mark your calendars, so this is what we hope to, this is what we hope to do. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. Any questions that you might have on that? The other thing that I have for you this evening is a policy meeting. I've asked to, if you could please change it to January 101st, because of a conflict. And I believe the majority of people who responded said that that would be okay. And the only other thing that I have is to wish all of you a very, very Christmas and a restful holiday season.
Steve.
That's it.
Steve has a question.
Nope, sorry, Steve. The building administrators all mentioned a positive feedback from a late start. Has anybody been getting negative feedback? Have you or then received anything from parents about pushback on having a late start?
Yep. I will let the building administrators address that from their building perspective.
I have not had any negative feedback.
The only thing I got was some people had forgotten that it was a late start. So what I'm going to do is just put out a auto dial, even though it's on infinite campus and everything went out. We're just going to do an auto dial the night before a late start because of some people. It's all welcome.
I had a few staff that were skeptical because the staff themselves have children of the elementary removal and seem to work things out. So there were a lot of questions earlier on and then once we're done, or two or three, I know.
Okay, because I know at the beginning, there seemed to be some negatives floating around out there.
I think everyone was very skeptical on how daycare was going to work and.
Yeah, yeah.
Steve, we had one call to our office from a parent who was upset because they felt it was difficult for them to find, bring their, find arrangements for their child first thing in the morning and then one of them had to go back and pick the child up and bring him to school. But we had one call with that.
So the positives so far is far away and any negative feedback for sure.
I believe in the opinions of the administrative team, yes.
I think it's just reminders because it sounds like you're getting a lot of calls with people not understanding like what time is it? Yeah, so I think maybe just getting out in front of it for the next one.
And I'm not sure if it was compounded because we had the storm day the day before. Yeah. So it just kind of got people, because I hadn't gotten any concerns all year and I, I've never given reminders for anything like that, so, but it's easy to do.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry if I'm coming a little late, but I have an NSBA meeting to attend. I'm going to run down the whole of here, so. So, next up, we have public comment. I do have a person for the public, so I will read the introduction because it's actually been a while. Then, you know, to give Scott the whole, the whole.
Game.
The whole game, yes. So, and it's been a while, so. So for those online that want to weigh in another time, they'll know as well. So, "School boards are elected to govern their schools. Our meetings are for the board to conduct the required business of the school district. By law, this business is conducted in view of the public. While these meetings are in the public, they are not public meetings as a legislative session is not a public meeting. They are in the public but not intended to be an interactive question-answer public meeting. The law requires us to provide a public commentary during our meetings. The public comment period is your opportunity to express your views within the guidelines of our policy. It is not an open discussion period. Accordingly, do not expect the board to respond to your questions or concerns tonight. While a simple question that is raised in the public comment period may be answered at the discretion of the chair or a more thoughtful and thorough response, we suggest that questions be emailed to the appropriate building initiative first and the superintendent and then board members if you want to pursue it further. Please keep in mind that a response may take a few days due to the requirements of the day and will allow time to gather the information requested. I also want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose. In order that we can hear from the largest number of different voices and have time to conduct our regular business, each speaker is limited to three minutes for comments. At the outset, after being recognized by the chair, we ask that speakers identify their name and town of residence. Please try to be brief and try not to repeat yourself. Please direct your comments to the board. The board will not permit comments, complaints, or allegations, good or bad, about faculty and staff members or students. These are matters which the board is not permitted to hear in public. If there are complaints about faculty, staff, or students, these will be handled appropriately through the established policies and procedures. We know discussions of school-related issues can get emotional, but please remember our children are watching and we are neighbors, so please be civil. We will not permit profanity or shouting at one another or comments that disparage and attack individuals or groups of individuals. Thank you for your patience during this introduction. We hope and have confidence that your participation will be helpful and constructive to the board." So, thank you for the thought. Did you have any public comments?
No, I didn't have any.
Maybe? Anybody else? Sorry, I guess we're good? All right. Well, thanks for joining us. All right, so public comments will be closed, old business. We don't have any old business, so I guess we're on to new business. Reaffirmation allows superintendent to accept resignations. This is something we do annually to give Peter the ability to accept resignations as they come in so that he can proceed on with whatever needs to be done to fill the voids. You know, wait for us to get around to a monthly meeting. So, is there a motion to reaffirm? Some such a thing? All right.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of reaffirming the allowing the superintendent to accept resignations? Okay, so you're in this. Next up is the minimum wage increase with January 1st of 2025. 14.25 an hour to 14.65 an hour.
So, you really have a couple of things to look at on this sheet of paper, but for tonight's purposes, the only thing that we really need to focus on is, when you look at the top chart, so you're going to hear us talk a lot about unfunded mandates during budget season, things that are out of our control. This is one of those legislative acts that in Janu, in June of this coming year, minimum wage for our ed techs will jump to 125% of what the minimum rate wage is going to increase as of January 1st. So when you look at this chart, you'll see that first line, educational technician, these are subs that I'm talking about right now, these are subs. Educational technician, right now, they're making 14.25 an hour. Come January 1st, the law has changed, they'll need to make 14.65 an hour. And what you're asking to do tonight is to vote and make that adjustment so that we're in compliance with the law. However, come June 30th of next year, that minimum for that ed tech will be 18.31 per hour because it's 125% of minimum wage is the new legislation on that. Out of our control. Same, same holds true. If you drop down in that box that you have there, you'll see food service. Right now, we're paying 14.25 an hour. That, we're recommending that we jump just to meet the statute right now. So we go 14.65 on January 1st. But if you go across, it's going to be 16.85 for them because they are at 115%, not 125.
So the ed tech's 125, everybody else is 115?
The people who are not, yes, not.
Food service.
Food service.
And substitutes only is what we're talking about.
Substitutes.
Yeah.
That's a great question, I'll get to that in just a second. Yep, yep. So then secretary, same thing, 14.50. There'll be 14.65 come January 1st and there'll be 16.85. Okay. We did budget for this small increase because we knew it was coming. More importantly, when we negotiated with the ed tech contracts last year, we knew this was coming as well. So we negotiated that contract with this in mind. And so, come next, except August, we will have a few ed techs on certain steps that will need adjustments because they will not be at that 18.31 proposed hourly range. So we will need to make adjustments to a few people, but it's going to be a few people.
And additionally, come this time next year, because the state comes out with their state minimum wage for the general minimum wage, which this is based upon, they come out with that in August or September. So it's 125% of that number which will apply next January. And yes, even though we have negotiated into a three-year contract, you know, we estimated what the increase was going to be. But anybody that falls below that, of course, we'll have to bump them up accordingly.
We only have a few steps, step one, step two.
Yeah, it's only going to be those that are on the bottom that potentially would already be there.
What we don't need to talk about tonight, but what I do want to bring to your attention because before our last board meeting this year, we're going to have to look at this. If you look at this impact with this change, you look at what your teachers are being paid to substitute for the day versus what your ed techs and food service people and secretaries will be paid next year. And then if you look at this list, just quickly scan it. When you look at, and I've, and I've listed different communities, what they're currently paying them per hour now, currently, right now, compared to what we're paying, you can see what we're paying in the box up top. You'll see that we are significantly lower than a lot of these other communities around us. What's important is that we remain competitive with these other communities so that we're able to continue to get ed techs to come and work with us. So we'll have that conversation as we get into the, into the budget season and as we have more conversations with what others are, are offering for wages for substitutes. But that is another one of those barriers, if you will, when it comes to the, to the budget that we need to address. But for the purpose of this evening, we are simply asking you to approve us making a change to those amounts that you see on the agenda.
Not to be specific about it, but this is required by law, correct?
It is, so it's nothing.
It's not a funded mandate.
It's an unfunded mandate, but our approval, whether we approve or not, this has to happen.
Correct.
But technically, we ought to vote on expenditures.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
Yeah, it's an unfunded.
Oh, yeah.
Just agents of the state.
Correct. It's correct.
Yeah. So.
I'll make the motion.
To approve it as.
As presented.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second. All right. Second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the increase as presented? Any more? Thank you. The state thanks you too, by the way. Consideration of additional Schedule C support for the drama program. It's got to be Jason.
Good evening again. I want to introduce myself, Mr. Warren. I came with Warren, I'm a senior creative junior high and I'm the junior high drama advisor. And over the last few years, our drama numbers are going through the roof. We had discussions last year whether we should pursue additional supports. Just wondering if it was an anomaly, but this guy is building a wonderful drama program. He had sign-ups recently and the numbers still continue to, to grow, which is a good problem. Last year, we had volunteer supports and we felt like this year, I think it's time, with the right person in place, the numbers are, participation's great. So Caleb's going to talk a little bit more about the program and can answer questions. I just wrote some stuff down, mostly because I get nervous. Weird for me. When I began at Winslow, I became the drama advisor, my first play had 16 students. That year, one of our performances was cut short due to weather and it was right before vacation, so coming back and putting it on was not really feasible. The students begged me to put on a second show and in the second show, we had 18 students. So same year, still an increasing number. The next year, we came back and I had 25 students. This year, our interest list is up to 30. That comes with some, some trickiness. As the sole advisor, I have to manage every aspect of program, scheduling rehearsals, overseeing set design, costumes, props, lighting, sound, everything. And that's what I had to do with 30 young adults in multiple different rooms at the same time. So the scheduling becomes very overwhelming to have one person. My worry is that if it stays at one sole advisor, students will start to lose interest in the program, which we definitely don't want because as Jason said, interest and the, the production value has, has been great the last couple of years. The position, the co-advisor position will also help students develop skills that extend beyond stage. Drama teachers teamwork, problem-solving, technical skills. And a co-advisor can help foster all those things behind the scenes, which you absolutely need for the drama productions. And if anybody got to go see the production of Chicago that the high school put on, a lot of those students are from the group of individuals that missed out due to COVID on the elementary drama productions. And so they came to the junior high and they were able to participate in all these plays. And I saw it and I thought it was fantastic. And several of those students, as you met them a couple of years ago, they were very quiet and introverted. And to see them dancing and singing on stage is really heartwarming. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions?
Through the chair. How many productions do you do per year? Do you do a fall and a spring or?
We do not, we do one. At the junior high level, we compete with extracurricular sports. At the junior high level, we compete with extracurricular sports. So we schedule in March, which fits in after the high schools' productions and their one acts, but also before spring sports starts. But even with rehearsals, we're competing with winter sports, swimming, the late winter sports as well, swimming.
And when do you start the actual process?
We have already had our first interest meeting and we will start after break. Start with rehearsals and.
And do you do, sorry, do you do music, musical, or just straight performance?
We tend to stick with comedies. At this age, drama is a lot for them, especially where a lot of them are new to the program. Music is harder to do. I don't really have a background for music. But comedy and that's pretty incredible.
Do you, I have a question. Do you have someone who's interested in co-chairing with you?
Yes, last year, Anne Clifford was instrumental in helping me. And with her art background, what she could provide to set design and costume and all that.
And is it like a stipend? Is that what we're voting on?
It is. And how this works is all of those Schedule C positions go through a formula. And the formula asks questions about, you know, the duration, the amount of time that people would have to put into this thing for safety. Like if you have a contact sport versus something that's not a contact sport, the stipend would be a little bit higher. How long a season is it? There are a lot of factors that go into it. So it's not a significant amount of money for these stipends.
How much ballpark is that?
Eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And is this a stipend that can be transferred from an approved position that's vacant? I mean, is the money?
So we got two things going on. That's a great question. We got two things going on. So what Caleb is talking about right now is for next year. However, right now, Jason has a Schedule C vacant position that we could help Caleb with this year because the money is there and that position is vacant. So you're really looking at two things in Caleb's case, is helping him right now? And then next year would be?
Putting it into budget.
Putting it into the budget next year.
Correct.
Correct. Having had one kid in particular, but both kids involved with drama programs, I clearly understand the benefits of what it brings students on so many fronts that you alluded to. And yeah, it's definitely, it's cheap money spent for a lot of reward and for the kids. I'm on board with it.
So are we just making a motion to, I mean, the money's already there?
In this case, you would be making a motion to let Jason use the existing funds to pay for this position this year? And then you would make another motion to add this as a stipended position for the following year?
Or is that just part of the budget conversation?
That's part of the budget conversation.
But for right now, I make a motion, may I? To approve allowing the funds that are already there to be used for the program. I don't know if I said that correctly, but.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the use of this year's Schedule C funds to fund this year's program and then we'll close the budget next year. So all in favor of the motion? All right, any others?
Thank you. Yeah, you have to add.
Yeah.
Hello, I have a statement from Carrie Whitney for the elementary. Good evening. We've just completed another successful musical at Winslow Elementary School with our fourth through sixth grade after-school drama program. Willie Wonka Jr. proved to be extremely popular with our students as sixty-seven initially signed up for the musical. Sixty students remained throughout the season after parts were assigned. That's more than I've seen in my twenty-five years of musical directing.
And she does it by herself? It's craziness.
From 2017 to 2020, our program started in January and ran to the middle of March. Due to our equally successful show fire, I requested to change the schedule to fall. Our current program runs from mid-September to the first weekend in December. We rehearse three to four days a week for ninety minutes until the final two weeks, where we go for two hours. On average, thirty-five to forty students participate in drama at WES. These are the numbers since the program started. In 2017, there were fifty-two students. Twenty eighteen, fifty-five. Twenty nineteen, thirty-eight. Twenty twenty, forty-eight, but that show was canceled, you know why? Twenty twenty-two, there were forty-two students. Twenty twenty-three, there was fifty-five students, and sixty this year. The numbers are fantastic, however, that's a lot of students for one person to manage with little to no assistance. I am the director, choreographer, voice coach, set designer, and supervisor for these students. I've been doing so on my own from the beginning. I've tried to rely on volunteers to help rehearsals by creating signup sheets for staff members to volunteer a night here or there to help with crowd control, but that was not successful. I've had staff members, many who are cast parents, volunteer time to help with crowd control on the night of performances. This is challenging for those who don't know all of the students. Furthermore, managing students in a small holding space behind the stage is a lot of work for just one or two volunteers. Gentlemen, now Chris Bigu always sent over thespians to assist when and where they could, usually on performance nights in the wings. And I've tried to create a schedule that allows me to work with certain scenes that have only a manageable amount of students. However, when we get closer to showtime, it's essential that all of the casting crew are in attendance. The need for an assistant is essential for this program to continue. I am in need of not only a second set of eyes, but someone who is with me from the beginning to the end of the season. I could go on about this role, the role this person recalled in addition to the aforementioned, but I will be more than willing to assist with the job description if the position is approved. Respectfully submitted, Carrie Whitney, WES Drama Director.
Amen. I don't know how she does that. So I have, I used to dance with mainstay ballet and I teach ballet and I live in that world and I watch those shows and I just have no idea. And I teach little kids dance for one hour. And sometimes you leave and you're like, oh. I don't know how she does it. So anyway, yes, for me, that's, it's been, I don't know how she does it. So is this about next year?
Yeah, so what you're approving is you would approve that we look into what the costs will be in the job description and then we bring it to you during budget season so that you can see it and decide if it's something that you want to add or not.
And it would be a teacher at school or just whoever?
Well, yeah, it could be an ed tech, but it's a stipend position, so whatever.
Okay.
Stipend position like the junior high.
Right.
And she's doing it with as many, if not more, kids at a younger age.
Except there are more, she had more productions?
No, we just have the one.
And are there other stipend positions at the elementary? Or would?
Well, it wouldn't be an issue for this.
Well, I'm not talking about this year. We're not establishing a new precedence by creating a stipend position where none exists before. There are other stipends?
Carrie gets a stipend.
Okay, so there.
So you're actually asking for an assistant to her?
Right, right, okay, just wanted to, we're not creating a new category?
Nope.
And this is just exploratory?
Well, ultimately, we have to fund it in the budget.
Right.
But the Schedule C position would have to be.
It would have to be built. You would have to gather the information to say, this is what we are proposing.
What you're voting on tonight is to give us permission to gather the information to present to you during budget season?
Yes. Yeah, I'll make that motion. Yeah, we can always say no.
I'm going to say yes. I mean, wait to see, wait to see, you know? I just truly, I don't know.
I can't imagine fifty of those.
Collapse.
I'll second.
Who said yes?
I did. I made you one. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? First, we'll be discussing further. All right, hearing none, all in favor of gathering that information and helping in Schedule C?
And that age group, can I just say?
All right.
And so that would be for the junior high and high school permission to look into what the costs would be and?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then again, and typical, just kind of put that out there too. I mean, we have a lot of Schedule C positions. For example, in athletics, for example, we have a lot of assistant coaches, but if they only have five kids show up to the team, we don't put an assistant coach on the team. I mean, so we're, you know, we manage the Schedule C positions based upon the demand that's there and the numbers. So if the numbers were to drop off.
Here's an example, Joe, we hadn't had golf in years, but it was on Schedule C. But we just hadn't used it in ten to twelve years. Then we got interested, we brought golf back. There was already those stipends there that we hadn't been using, so it was approved.
Right.
Can I just say one more thing about Ms. Whitney? Not only the sheer quantity of those kids, but the age group of those kids. And also, you may have all kinds of different behaviors that are happening and you're just alone. So I am in awe of her. So yes, anyway.
All right, good. I know they do a great job.
Yeah, and they're great shows.
And the Chicago show was a great show, but I actually didn't get to see it. All right, thank you. Next up is first read of policy DJH, purchasing and contracting. You hear me, staff code of conduct.
So this comes to you as a result of the policy committee looking at this information. It was brought to our attention, John Hershey, your food service director, is going through a state review this spring. The state review person from the Department of Education took a quick look at our existing policies in these areas and said that we would be wise to look at the most recent language from main school management, especially in the rules, because there were some changes that we needed to update our policies too. So essentially, what you're looking at here with DJH is just the strikeouts are our current existing language. The language that's in bold comes from main school management, which was recommended that we include. And on the second page, you have the same strikeouts and language in bold. You'll notice that there's a whole section included in bold on staff gifts and solicitations, which we didn't necessarily have in our policy, which has now been added, which is something that they wanted us to make sure was in there when we went through the review. So this would be a first read. You'd see this again next month.
And this is twelve years old? We haven't looked at, the board has not looked at this in twelve years?
Right.
And the presumption is that they would be replacing school unit name with Winslow Public Schools?
Correct. And just so you know, this, our policy, this policy stayed in effect until 2021. So even though ours was old, this didn't change until 2021.
And the change is federal or state?
Federal, language, federal language.
Do we have a motion to approve the first read of policy DJH as presented?
Yeah.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, tomorrow. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving our first read policy DJH? Any others?
Just unrelated question. When changes like this happen, like in 2021, it was like, oh, these, why don't we do a that? We just.
Why don't we do a that? Yeah, so probably we had other policies in 2021 that really needed some immediate attention. So we go through the whole policy manual because there are lots of policies there. And we try our best to keep them within a five-year span. But it's sometimes difficult just because of time.
And this was in the middle of COVID, actually, so.
I was thinking that too.
We had a lot going on.
And I'm sure there's a cost associated with an attorney to draft that for us and that's a factor or no?
Time is a factor. I mean, the policy committee could meet every other week and look at policies because there are so many that need to be reviewed and updated. Time is a factor. And a lot of these, because of the discussions that you have to have, they compare into the main school management policies, making the calls that you need to make, et cetera.
Yeah.
And every time there's a change at the federal level in terms of administration, there's the change in policy that eventually comes out of that, which we're going to see again. But Title IX, there was the change with the Trump administration, change with the Biden administration. Now, there will probably be a change with the Trump administration. So you're talking about three different changes within eight years.
Sometimes they change faster than you can adapt to them. There's that time they come out with the rules and so forth and all that. Because you get to figure, I mean, you get to change the federal policy and then you'll have like main school management drama with some whatever, will develop model policies to comply with the updates to the law. Not that we don't tweak those sometimes that fit us better, but yeah, there's a timeline there that takes a little time for everybody to through all these at all levels, so. Particularly in 21.
Otherwise occupied.
Yeah, a little occupied. But fun days. So we do have next, the first read of policy DJ, bidding purchasing requirements and the DJ-R administrative procedures to go with it.
So this is another one that is being brought to you because of the review that's going to take place. The policy DJ is the actual policy. The changes in this one aren't as significant. You'll see just the bold, the highlighted bold is new language. And so you'll see that the changes aren't as significant. The one piece you'll notice on page two of the bidding and purchasing requirements is that under bidding purchasing not required by law, the number in their policy was, in the sample policy, was left blank. The number we had in our older policy was five thousand. So the committee looked at that number and thought about today's market and thought that ten thousand in that space might be more realistic rather than leaving it at five. So that's the change there. However, when you look at the rules, you'll see that our existing rules have all been struck out. And the reason for that is because you'll look at the MSMA administrative procedure. Many of the rules that were in our old, that were in the old policy still pertain, but there were other changes in the rules. And we didn't, it was very difficult to try to mix and match and not miss anything.
It's almost like we're revoking the DJR, right?
We are, we are. Because there's so much, so we're basically saying, we're striking this out and replacing it with that. Right, because of language, the updates, it just, we didn't want to miss anything. So that's what that's all about. And again, this is a first read.
Just to be specific.
You need two motions for this? You do.
And to be specific, I indicated that this included the purchasing requirements and DJR, the administrative procedure, which, colon, federal procurement manual with main school units. I just wanted to make sure that was.
So I move that we accept the DJ bidding purchase requirements, which is basically strikeout, not strike to the language.
Inclusive of DJR?
Yes.
Administrative procedure?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second tomorrow. Do we have any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the first read of policy PJ and procedure DJR specified. Yes. You.
And then you need the, the bidding purchasing requirement one?
No, that's the one we just did. Did the other one before that. That was DJA.
Okay, all right. DJI, DJ.
Yeah, two new acronyms. All right. Next up, voter appointments. We only have one and Infonone varsity boys basketball volunteer coach that should read. Just to correct that, rather than girls.
You need a motion on that?
We do need a motion on it.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving Infonone is the varsity girl, uh, boys basketball volunteer coach. All right, you need any? Uh, reservations, we have one and Peter has already accepted that. As always, we thank people for their service to Winslow. Um, other business recognition. I was gonna print this and then it occurred to me as I was doing my Zoom meeting with a while ago, that actually didn't print it out. So it's good that I have my laptop. So this is a little, uh, a little behind schedule for various reasons, but I'll read this that I wrote and that will kind of explain it a bit. So, "It is with extreme pleasure that we recognize our superintendent, Peter Tippitot, for his receipt of Maine's Outstanding Leadership Award from the Maine Schools Superintendent's Association. This award is particularly meaningful and it, as it is an award determined solely by his peers, not recognition one would apply for consideration as our summer awards. It is great to know that educational leaders statewide see and recognize exception, the exceptional person we are fortunate, fortunate to have leading our school system. Unfortunately, this recognition has been delayed a few months as we waited for MSSA to publish their newsletter. Due to some circumstances at MSSA, their newsletter publication was far later than expected, but was finally published recently. So please join, uh, please see the excerpt below. I'll send this to all of you. Uh, from the MSSA newsletter as well as the attached letter I received as board chair. Please join me in congratulating Peter for his receipt of Maine's Outstanding Leadership Award." And I'll read a few things from that. So the excerpt is, uh, "Maine Schools Superintendent's Association is proud to celebrate the exceptional leaders who dedicate themselves to shaping the future education of our state. These remarkable individuals embody vision, resilience and unwavering commitment to the success of our schools, students and communities. As champions of innovation and stewards of opportunity, they navigate the complexities of public education with courage and integrity, ensuring every child has access to a world-class education. We honor their tireless efforts, acknowledging their profound impact and express our deepest gratitude for their leadership in driving Maine's educational excellence, educational excellence forward." So I'll paraphrase that, but that's that. And I will get to the letter because that's a little more directed toward Peter. So I'll read this a little bit from the, the letter that I got.
How lucky are we, I just say.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
This, this letter really, I, I think hits it pretty well. Um, it was, "Dear Superintendent Tippitot, it is great with great pleasure that I extend my heartfelt congratulations to you for being honored with the Outstanding Leadership Award by your peers. MSSA established this award in nineteen eighty-four to recognize superintendents and assistant superintendents for their outstanding leadership. Your remarkable ability to inspire both educators and students alike has not gone unnoticed. Your innovative initiatives and strategic approach have significantly enhanced the educational experiences of countless students, empowering them to reach their full potential. Besides being honored by your peers, it is your genuine passion for education and your deep care for the well-being of your students and staff that truly set you apart. You have consistently demonstrated an exceptional ability to lead with empathy, integrity and forward-thinking mindset qualities that are essential for navigating the complexities of today's educational landscape." Uh, paragraph on, when it was done in June, "Once again, congratulations on this well-deserved honor. It is a privilege and honor to celebrate your success." And we can, like, executive director, so.
Amazing. Out of how many superintendents?
I don't know how many there are.
A lot.
There's, I think, three. I think they got this award out of, I don't know how many school districts and how many superintendents there are. Quite a number and obviously our little school district here is, you know, Peter makes an impact with.
Yeah.
We're all Winslow. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge that. And I want to thank everybody who is sitting in the audience for being such an outstanding team because it's, it's, it makes this job fun and, um, it's, it's a team approach always. It's a team approach and that includes the board. That includes the parents of the community. That includes everybody that we've worked with all along, the council. Everybody that we've worked with to make education really great in our community. And so I, I, I thank all of you for your support because this is not something that one does alone. Thank you.
Thank you for being the glue that brings it all together.
Yeah, leadership.
Yeah. Um, those of us who know, I think, you know, Peter well, you know, and this, this is the sort of thing that, you know, there's some awards you do actually go on a platform, which Peter will never do. It's not his thing by any stretch. But, uh, you know, anybody who gets recognized by their peers, uh, you know, for what you do. And I, I know he gets questions and phone calls from superintendents often, um, you know, on how we handle this certain thing or whatever. I mean, it just goes through death experience and respect that they have for what he does and, and that's recognized obviously amongst any superintendents, so. Uh, so we're just lucky to have him here. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll send this to Lou. You'll again put something else in this stack? I have an email to send it to everybody, so I'll send that to everybody.
I have this in fact.
He's got one.
I mean.
Yeah.
Just dial the phone. Okay, just checking. All right. So. After all I could do, next up, we've got an executive session. So before we go to that, our next round of the scheduled meeting is January twenty-seventh. For those that are tuned in, uh, be right here. We don't have one of those budget meetings before then, right? I'm gonna use the. So, um, does everyone want to do the pleasures of reading the motion for executive session?
Motion to go into executive session, one MRSA subsection four zero five six delta, waiver contract discussions, teacher contract and one MRSA subsection four zero five six alpha, evaluation of officials, appointees, employees, superintendent evaluation contract.
So.
Second.
This motion, we have a second. Uh, all in favor of going into executive session. All right. You're not part of it?
Two-minute break.
Yeah.